January 9th. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed on local cable channel 13 or 03, or on the Internet by accessing the town website at bucksportmain.gov, clicking on Watch Meetings and selecting Town Council. Questions or comments may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing eslaside@bucksportmain.gov, or during the meeting by calling 307-8030. Next item on the agenda tonight is the swearing in of councilors Paul Bissonnet, Paul Rabs, and Jennifer Tarian. So I'll have you all join me down front. So I'll have you all raise your right hands. I state your name.
Paul Rabs.
Paul Bissonnet.
Jennifer Tarian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
Obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Maine.
And of the State of Maine.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
Of the Town of Bucksport.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Town Counselor.
The duties of the Office of Town Counselor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll bring it to you, how about that?
Well, if the unison of your oath is any indication of swift function this year.
The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Counselor Eastman.
Here.
Counselor Tarian.
Here.
Counselor Hare.
Here.
Counselor Bissonnet.
Here.
Counselor Rabs.
Oh.
Counselor Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Rankin.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the annual actions of the council, first being the election of mayor. So that being said, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Nominate Paul Bissonnet.
Second. Nomination of Paul Bissonnet for mayor. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the floor. All in favor of Paul Bissonnet as mayor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. One, I think. Thank you. Uh, guess it's my turn now.
Your turn.
Uh, so that would be 4B, election of Deputy Mayor. Chair Luntz, enter motion. Or nomination, excuse me.
Nominate Mark Eastman.
Second.
Second, and any other nominations? Hearing none, all is in favor. Opposed. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Committee assignment discussion. I will keep it brief tonight. Um, I have heard from some of, oh, thank you. I have heard from some of you about, um, desired committees. Uh, so, um, we'll get a list out, um, to everyone of who is on what committees presently, what slots are open. If you have any particular interest, please let me know. I'm pretty sure we will be able to accommodate, um, in all likelihood, now that I'm saying it, something will come up, but in all likelihood, we'll be able to accommodate any desired committees. Um, so please let me know, um, as soon as possible. But if we could get that list out, um, beginning of next week, um, we'll go from there, and we can, um, do committee assignments at our next meeting. That works for everyone?
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Presentation of any town council recognitions? Don't believe we have any this evening. Uh, consider minutes of previous meetings. We have, uh, the minutes from our meeting on December the 14th. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review those.
Second.
Second, and all is in favor? Next, uh, we have two pieces of correspondence. Uh, the first is Verona Police Call on December the 23rd. Um, and we also have a letter to the editor that was written by our town manager. If you have anything you wanted to say to that.
Just that it was published in, uh, the Ellsworth American and the Bangor Daily News, and I believe the, um, first edition after their break in the enterprise as well. Well, we, it's a, it's a civil matter. After discussion with the affected officer and, and public safety, and our attorney, it felt that it was appropriate for the town to register its, um...
Support.
Support of the op, thank you, of the, um, officer. It's not just the officer at this point. There's a whole bunch of other entities named on that, in that, um, spot. At this point, that's all that, all that the town can do. But I, I am pleased that the, the publication to which it was sent, uh, published it.
Agreed. Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Very good. Uh, next, discussion items. Uh, we have three. The first is, I'm gonna say it a different way. We have an update on the dam.
That was probably not right.
It would have been fun, but I decided, it's a new year. I'm gonna try to behave myself.
I missed that.
No.
Okay. At our last meeting, we had a vote from the council to, um, continue exploring the idea of ownership of the Silver Lake Dam. The other four communities, um, Orland, Surrey, Blue Hill, and... Penobscot, all held similar meetings with the same outcome, which is that they also all voted to continue looking at the possibility of dam ownership. Uh, Bucksport Mill LLC has been notified of the council's and the other towns' actions for that. But no meetings for further discussion along that were scheduled because of the holidays intervening. But I anticipate that within the next week or so, we will be hearing from them in terms of, of what the next steps for that look like. There's, there's a lot to be discussed for any meeting could take place. Um, non-disclosure agreements and how much or, or little those can be utilized, and how much information we would need prior to having any in-person meetings so that the town had time enough to, to, um, review that information. And there are a number of bills that have been introduced in the legislature in regard to this, um, this matter. One being through the governor's office and the DEP, which extends the time limits for, uh, towns to have before coming up with an answer on this, and, um, making it clearer that the DEP has the ability to ask for additional information. And then there's another bill that, um, is being submitted that looks at, um, allowing the towns of, the other four towns, not Bucksport, of forming an organization to, a quasi municipal organization to take ownership of Alamosa and Tadi. And that gives some, I won't call it taxing authority, but the ability to, to assess fees to property owners surrounding the lakes or, or municipalities. Bucksport is not participating in that legislation. We have only Silver Lake. It's entirely within our borders. There would be no reason for the town to be involved in an organization that was, that had dams from the other two dams as part of it. That, that wouldn't, um, there are a couple of bills that I'm not sure that, um, Mr. Campbell had, is introduced. I'm not sure what those are yet. I have not seen those.
One of them is another form of a duplicate for the timeframe.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. So those are, those are, uh, in process. Counselor Bishop, in his other role, has been meeting with, um, other legislators from both sides of the aisle who are all supporting, um, legislation to assist the towns with this process. So, um, there's a high likelihood of success because it is bipartisan in nature that it's being done as. So that is where we stand right now with the dams. The, the five, uh, communities had a Zoom call recently, but it was, it was basically what I just told you is what we discussed, um, in regard to that. The, um, Tadi Pond Lake Association has undertaken a significant public relations, um, effort in this. They have posters, they have pins, "Save Our Ponds." Um, they've set up, uh, uh...
GoFundMe?
GoFundMe that, um, when donations are made to that, they're divided between the five towns, and the percentage is of 30% to Bucksport, 30% to Orland, 20% to Surrey, and 10% to Blue Hill and Penobscot. The site encourages people who want it to go to a specific place to send the money to that place, not to contribute that way. I think the last I knew, $1,600 had been donated on that GoFundMe. I haven't recently. And, um, and they're doing that to raise public awareness of the importance of people staying connected to this issue.
Please.
That's where we are.
Oh, I'm just curious, this question's for Counselor Bishop. When do, when would, is culture tomorrow? When would we see, like, the language of the bill? Or is it just a draft right now?
When it comes out of the reviser's office. Some have language already attached to them that were pretty much stated how we wanted them to be and ready to go. Um, Representative Nina Millican supported, uh, one that was fairly open-ended, so we had a little bit more time to tweak what we needed to tweak along the way. So it's gonna be one of the later ones for us to get the language out of. There's currently five of us. There's two senators and three state representatives that are all over this. I had a very productive meeting, uh, with the Attorney General the other day over this as well, so.
Off subject, does anybody have any objections if I close the door? Because the whole time Sue's talking, somebody's listening out there.
Oh, it's driving me crazy. It's like Rich has got it.
Thank you. Feedback from something.
Oh, okay.
I'd hear your echo at every word.
I'm sorry.
Um, any other questions for, on this panel? All right. Thank you. Uh, next is the facilities position discussion, um, in regards to the infrastructure committee recommendation from December.
Infrastructure had moved this, um, topic to the council for consideration. Um, and the, the topic is the addition of the facilities, um, individual, um, similar to what the school has for their, but, um, also a kind of roll-up receives and fix-it kind of guy, or woman, uh, either way, however it turns out. Um, but the, the, the majority of the councils at the time attended most of those hearings. Obviously, Councilors Rab and Tarian haven't had that opportunity, but the, the question that came from infrastructure was to support this, but when? Should it be an advertisement that happens fairly soon so that someone can get on board by spring? Or should it be done as part of budget with a start date of July?
Mike, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I would highly recommend that we put this into the budget process. That's my personal opinion. I feel that, uh, given the budget climate, both with what we've done recently with our budget and, uh, what we're gonna have for support systems out of the state, I would recommend that this be included in our budget.
I'd like to see it in the budget, to see the actual impact of it. Because this, this is correct, right? The overall would be like $102,000.
That, that's the impact of a $27.50 position on a budget due to benefits. And, and we present it that way because we, we turn it into an actual rate per hour, including benefits. That's...
This...
That, I mean, that assumes that whoever we hired would be on the family plan for health insurance, but it would be, it, it, it wouldn't... We would need, I think we need to state the potential...
The maximum.
The maximum, not, not understated.
It could cost us, yeah.
You know, it is, that's what it would be.
It's a good idea to run the most expensive scenario, as we consider.
Every other line item bought health insurance is fixed anyway.
That's correct.
Into the cost, yeah.
Well, um, proud of the job description here, too. Can we add, or think about adding in here? When we go to do the work down here on the, the town pier and the wharf and all that multi-million dollar effort, will he, will this person, he or she, become like a clerk of the works to mark, to keep a... Who's gonna do the job of the specification versus keeping change orders under control?
A construction operation, the engineers will have a person on site that does that, and the person that the engineers report to would be rich.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, my opinion is I've been recognized the need to want to get after this sooner rather than later, but at the same time, I, I would have to say that I'm so very supportive of viewing it under the entire scope of the budget as well.
You want, could you do that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and last under discussion items, we have an update from the Historical Society. Hello.
Hi. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Betty La Forge, and I'm now president of the Bucksport Historical Society. So I want to start with, there was, um, discussion from the infrastructure committee that said that they would recommend to the council the possibility of putting in heat pumps to help with our humidity levels. So I, I went ahead and did estimates on that. However, in doing that, I've discovered that it's, um, something we can't do unless we upgrade the electrical. We only have a 60 amp entrance, and it's old, and we need a new, um, entrance box and everything. So it's about $15,000. So we're getting kind of high in the price. So it's something we need to address before we could do anything like that.
$15,000 for what? Just to switch a box?
No, it has to have an upgrade from a 60 amp entrance to a 100 amp entrance, and a new entrance box.
Does that include the, the heat pumps as well as the box?
No, no.
Fifteen for the electrical?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, that may be a little bit on the high side, and I can get it, you know, other estimates, but that's something we need to address first before we get into that. Um, another, um, suggestion has been to help control the humidity is, um, a trench drain. Uh, in the front of the building, we have a lot of water that comes off the roof, and as you know, it all goes downhill there, and, and it slopes towards the building as well. So we're getting maybe more water than we need to. If we could drain some of that off, that might be a, a help. So that's something.
I wondered about, I, when I went there for the open house, the, wouldn't the drain be on, not on your property, though? Would you have to get...
Well, we don't have property.
Right. But the drain would have to be on the property that Main Maritime owns, I think.
No, no, we're, we're, we're talking about in down...
I thought you meant, okay.
No, no, no.
Wrong building, sorry.
Yes, wrong building. I don't want to talk about the other building.
Because that also needs a drain, just in case.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I haven't, I am not into all the ditty-gritty of that particular project, so I don't know who owns what at that facility, you know? I know we own the building and we own some of the land, but I don't know the parking lot, and I don't know really all those details. Um, we're just talking about the museum right down here. Um, so that's where we're at. We're also, um, upgrading a lot of our policies and procedures, and that's, um, uh, something that we really need to, we need to tighten up, our structures so that we work better together. And that's what we've been working on for the last few months. And hopefully by spring, we'll be getting there. We're working on finishing up our inventory and, um, another, other, another, other, other, um, procedures. So that's where we're at. And so we're really, we really have a ways to go before we do anything else about, you know, the facility. Okay? You have any questions?
So, did they give you a quote on the heat pumps, or did you just stop right there?
Well, no, I did get a quote, and I did get it in writing, but, you know, I couldn't find it. I'm, I'm gonna go by memory, but, um, I think it was around $9,000. And, um, I did check on the rebate, which would be about $1,400, but I'm not sure if they would do that on both heat pumps. I'd have to go back and, and check with them. So, but that would be a while, because we first have to raise money for the electrical. Yep.
There may be some grants available for that.
Yeah, we're definitely hoping for that. Yep. Yeah, we, we haven't had, even had a budget. So we've just hammered out a budget this last meeting, and, you know, that's progress for the Historical Society at this point. You know, we really need that for grants. Some of them won't ask, but some will, so. Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We have two agenda items this evening. The first is resolve 2025-34 to accept fiscal year 2025, uh, the 2020, uh, fiscal year 2025 speed grant. Second, any questions or anything?
Chief Gagin would like to speak on that.
If I may, I just want to update you on these grants. The speed grant itself, we received $13,000 on that grant for designated patrols. This person will be out there designated on just speed when they're out there not answering complaints. We also got an additional $4,000 for distracted driving for people on their phones. Um, with that comes a free radar, um, which we're in, in need of and gonna ask for, and that's a total of $3,000 just for the radar. Um, we're planning on starting these next month, and we're hoping to do three speed details and one distracted driving detail per week. And that is a designated just for that, so it's important for the public to know that.
Does this grant allow you to pick what road you do the speed detail on? Or does it have to be a main?
We can do it on any road we want, is my understanding. Yep.
So you could parallel that with some of the speed complaints?
Exactly. Yep.
Any other questions for Director Gagin?
Thank you. You answer them.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All is in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And we'll move right along, uh, to the second part of what Director Gagin spoke to, uh, resolve 2025-35 to accept the fiscal year 2025 distracted driving grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next, we have an appointment this evening of Jacob Grant as the registrar of voters, um, for 2025, as well as his confirmation of appointment as town clerk and assistant town manager. Chair Luntz, enter motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? Welcome back, Jacob.
Thank you, sir.
We have, uh, under quick claims, discharges, and deeds, we have Christine Coleman, Tyler Coleman, and Jonathan Coleman, map 009, lot 062, uh, tax lien discharge, uh, from June the 16th of 2022. How the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Questions? All is in favor? Additionally, we have...
We just have to pass these around.
Additionally, we have, uh, for Kelly J. Albert and Alan D. Babcock, joint tenants, map 047, lot 14, tax lien discharge from, also from June the 16th, 2022. How the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? Town manager report.
Okay, first, tonight is the maiden voyage of our... You notice we don't have microphones in front of us because we have a, see the green light in the ceiling? That's our central mic. Our cameras are updated, our mic is updated, our, our video streaming is now coordinated, and we have, uh, the person doing this in the IT room next door instead of in the closet back there, which is where they used to be. And, um, we are hoping that certainly on the streaming side of this, the, the visual clarity and the ability to hear what people are saying should be much better than people have seen or heard in the back and in, in previous times. And the, those with spectrum, um, there will be an improvement, but we are limited by the bandwidth that we get where they, where spectrum puts the channel on their lineup. And that's why sometimes the quality of that is not as good. So that is, that's exciting. We've been working on this for two years to get to the point where this could be an integrated system. There is still a bit more to go. Setting up the phone to communicate with the council chambers, um, testing a remote participation system with this streaming. And then an indicator, um, that will show that streaming is in progress, um, in our system. So, um, many thanks to Jim Morley and, and Dylan Pointer, who have spent a lot of time. Dylan, I'm sure is more than, well, ready for this project to be done. It's, it's been a long time. I am pleased to report that we are now at full staffing at the town office with the addition of Jacob last week, and the final hire for the police department, which occurred last week as well. I want to thank all of the staff in both departments for going the extra mile while we have been short-staffed. A reminder to everyone, all dog owners, that dog licenses have to be done by January 31st of 2025 to avoid a state-mandated $25 fee for licensing, additional fee for licensing. We will be applying for another grant from the state for our Courtesy Boat Inspection Program. The deadline for that filing is February 27th. The grant pays for the majority of the program. A reminder to those who have not yet done so to go to the town website at bucksportmain.gov and click on the link that appears on the left side of the front page to sign up to receive important messages from the town via text. We will not be overwhelming people with messages, but it does provide a way for us to contact people with emergency, public safety notifications, and important meetings. This was a recommendation of our Safety Committee that we've now implemented for, um, emergencies. And finally, the DEP has requested additional information from Bucksport Mill LLC in regard to the closure plan that was submitted on 11/1/2024. I communicated with the project manager for this from DEP and was informed that the DEP still has 12/31/26 as the required... And one more thing we have. Um, the State of Maine has amended the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code adoption. Uh, on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, the Commissioner of the Department of Public Safety signed amendments into rule. Municipalities must enforce the newly adopted 2021 I codes and corresponding standards as of April 7th of 2025. We've been going on the 2015 code until now, but it's now updated. Um, our code enforcement officer gave me this, so that will be in effect as of April 7th.
Questions for Sue? Thank you.
John, you're up. Are you up?
Thank you.
Um, set public hearings and or hold public hearings and approval of any license... Um, set public hearings and or hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. We do not have any this evening. Discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public. Uh, we're gonna break protocol just for a second now that they've had a chance to settle in and I would like to, on behalf of the council, extend the warmest welcome, uh, to our newest councilors, both Gentarian and Abs. Um, very excited to have you aboard and we're gonna throw a budget at you sooner than you think and, uh, so you'll be right in the thick of it before you even know it, but, uh, I couldn't be happier for the both of you and, uh, for this council overall to have you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, now that I've run my mouth, um, anyone from the public this evening? We're going to, Don.
Uh, Don White, Bucksport. Um, I spoke to the DEPs today, um, and got some more information. As you know, we've been pursuing this landfill thing now for a long time. Um, I think the original closure plan was supposed to be in January one of last year, of twenty twenty-four. Uh, that was not, that didn't happen. In a letter, I think, from Mayor Bissonette of, in March of twenty twenty-four, you requested June thirtieth as a closure plan. That did not happen. Um, in a letter from Melanie Loyson, the commissioner of DEP, and Suzanne Miller, they requested a final closure plan in, as of November first. They submitted on November first, as, as Susan has pointed out, they did submit a closure plan. That closure plan was deemed incomplete by the department. Um, so we're continuing to dance with that. Then, the, in the, incomplete closure plan, if you notice in there, AIM says, uh, we plan to close five twenty-seven, twenty-seven, if I've read that correctly, and I read it three or four times. So there's a discrepancy between what the department is, is saying when the, they want it closed completely of twenty twenty-six and what AIM is now, is what they're saying in their, what they've offered, uh, in their closure plan that is not deemed complete. Um, again, I, I just point out that it continues to, we continue to slide in time. The DEP continues to move back. When I asked, is, are all options still open? The answer was yes. They still can do whatever. They have options. It allows them time to dance and play. Excuse my, uh, words, but I think you understand what I'm saying and I can maybe understand the frustration that those of us who've been following this for a long time, because we continue to allow the game to be played and to be controlled by AIM. DEP is, God bless them, has not been forthra, not, not been adamant in holding to deadline. I'm asking the council to, once again, to possibly get involved and pushing this a little bit relative to let's get a closure plan in here, let's get it completed, because who knows what AIM is doing at this point? Um, they could be, they're, they're just keeping their options open. They don't have any vested interest in doing anything right now. They, they just, uh, that kind, that, that stuff. So I, I would wonder if it's not time again from, from the council perspective to just, to send a, a letter or do some inquiries as to why, uh, certainly that five twenty-seven, twenty-seven date, which was, it's not even been acknowledged by DEP informally, but that's what, that's what's in there, if I've read it correctly. And again, it's an incomplete thing. And when I ask, is this another delay? Yeah, it says, yeah, there's another delay. And why is the delay that, that, why don't, why, why, why don't they have to, what's going on with that? Well, Haley Ward has lost an engineer. Haley Ward's the one that's doing the closure plan. The answer was Haley Ward has lost an engineer, so there's gonna be a delay. Again, so I, I just, uh, prompt the council to keep on to this a bit and perhaps even get involved a little more strenuously, because, uh, who knows what's going on here behind the scenes? I thank you for your time.
Can follow up on that? Sure. Okay, sure. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Ralph Chapman from Bucksport, and I, uh, bring you some information that was not available at the last council meeting. I've put it on a piece of paper for each of you. There are two questions and two answers on this piece of paper, if you kindly pass this around. Oh, actually, give me one, I, I've got it probably there. Thank you. I wanted to read what the, these are the two questions that I asked of Bucksport LLC relative to the, the dam and relative to Bucksport's ordinance relating to, um, the dam transfer abandonment or removal. First question I asked was whether the owner of the Silver Lake Dam is intending to follow the Bucksport ordinance relating to dams, dam removals or abandonments, and their answer is Bucksport Mill will abide by all valid legal requirements. I will translate that for you. That means no. They have no intention of complying with the ordinance. If they did, they would say yes. They did not say yes, therefore the answer is no. But it gives, their answer gives a clue as to what their reason is for their no answer, which is they don't consider the Bucksport ordinance to be valid. They provided an opportunity for a follow-up question, and so I asked, what are the reasons, if any, for Bucksport Mill LLC to find Bucksport's dam transfer abandonment or removal ordinance And their answer is a non-answer. That process is separate from the DEP process and will therefore be addressed separately. Uh, that means we're ignoring your question and we have no intention of answering it because there is no process for them to address that separately. So my question for you, and it's a, i- it's not meant to be an unfriendly question, but what is the council's strategy, the town's strategy, for enforcing its ordinance? It's a complicated question. It's a complicated question because it's quite clear that it's not going to be complied with voluntarily. That, I think, is very clear. And that puts the town in a very tricky position because the town is proceeding as though it is going to negotiate potential ownership of the dam with the company that's refusing to, to comply with the ordinance. I have reason to believe that if, your options may be very limited. The ordinance suggests that the transfer of ownership cannot take place unless the ordinance is complied with. Now imagine that you negotiate a transfer to the town and then say, well, by the way, we can't go through with that transfer that we've just negotiated because you haven't You can see that's a, that's not a nice position to be in. So what are your options? And I, and I, I don't, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a lawyer. Uh, and I strongly suggest that you get adequate legal advice on this matter. Uh, the options that you may have may go everywhere from explicitly abandoning the ordinance, uh, to taking some legal action immediately of some kind. And that's the reason why I'm pleading with you to develop a strategy in concert with a legal advice that's available to you. And I offer my help. I'm more than happy, if the town wishes me to be part of meetings with, uh, a lawyer or lawyers concerned about this, I'm more than happy to offer my help in that regard, but I'm not a lawyer and I'm mostly a citizen, hoping that you will develop a strategy here because you're being run over by a steamroller at the present time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Yeah, I had a copy for you. Oh, thank you.
Well, the, the discussion of legal strategies not best done in the council chambers where the meeting is being televised is, but the concerns you've expressed and the, what you've outlined in terms of options are, are certainly under consideration and review for, um, several what-if, you know, if it goes this way, if, if, that, this is not, nobody's sitting on their thumbs. The, those discussions are happening, but I, I am not free in a council chamber that people are watching to tell you the strategy that, that is being developed because then it's not strategy anymore, it is, that's the best I can say.
I would very strongly back that statement of yours. Thank you for that.
The only thing I'll add, and it's not, it's not meant in a confrontational manner at all, and it is not said with any, what I, what I believe is any degree of naivete. And I assure everyone in this room and the citizens of Bucksport that it is not, it is not my position to in any way defend Bucksport Mill LLC and their, any answer that they have given on bucksportmillanswers.com. But I will say this, their answer to the top question that you provided is Bucksport Mill will abide by all valid legal requirements. And I know how you've chosen to interpret that, and I'm even inclined to agree with it. However, we have an ordinance in place. We consulted with attorneys on that ordinance, and one can also choose to read that as that until otherwise, um, or shown otherwise, um, that Bucksport Mill LLC intends to abide by all valid legal requirements. And I believe, without having polled this council, um, but I believe that we are certainly of the opinion, as the town manager is, and you can tell me if I'm putting words in your mouth, that that ordinance that we put into place is legal, um, and that we will stand by it. And, um, until somebody tries to state otherwise, and I am confident we will, as we had a strategy for that, then we will have a strategy for that, um, potentiality. Maybe I'll stop there. But, um, I, again, I'm not saying that to argue with you in any way, just to say that I want to look at both interpretations for now and see what road that takes us, but to be, be, have a high level of awareness down the road as we go. Any other questions or comments on that? Anything else from the public?
My only comment was, my only comment was just to remind folks that we do actually have a very good representation and counsel. And so I think that process, I, I also agree that that process has to live into that relationship and, and I think, yeah, I'm just agreeing with other councilors that, that we, we will defend our, um, our ordinance.
I can state firmly, again, without having polling, polled councilors, that this council is not in the business of enacting policy, that it has no intention of, um, not enforcing. That, so, we'll see where that takes us. Um, anything else from the public? Anything from the council?
One thing.
So Reagan.
Um, just maybe for a future discussion to possibly put something into the budget. We've been talking about the historical society ever since I came on. This is year six in the biggest, I know they're a long ways away from a new building or moving or anything like that. They've got fundraising to do and a plan to, strategic plan to assemble, but I think we've all showed concern of preserving the artifacts. So if they're talking fifteen thousand, which I think we could do a little better than that to upgrade, and nine, maybe with a rebate, we'd be around twenty-two to twenty-three. That seems reasonable that we could cover those two costs and see what, and put it into the budget.
So are you requesting this evening that that becomes part of the budget conversation? Is what I'm hearing?
I, I would, at least in the next couple of meetings, discuss it further if people want to, but I would, that's twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars to preserve the artifact, and that's our main goal.
Want to run it through finance committee or?
That, um, process-wise, if it, if it's budgetary, we would encourage them to submit a request for funding, like other-
Through, through the, the traditional cycle?
Through the traditional, that's how outside entities get into the budget is through that outside agency request piece.
Now, do we still require, before they, like, before they come to finance, do they need to get three quotes for electrical and three for heat pumps?
Well, the, the, if they were to submit a request, but there's a whole application form and what you have to include and et cetera, that asks for it, the, if they're then funded through the budget process, then their, their, their process for getting quotes and their process for doing that is theirs. We're, we, we're not, we just fund the request. They then get their own quotes, hire their own people. We just write a check to them for the amount that you, that was appropriated once we see what they've done. But it, outside agencies, which they are, aren't something that we micromanage to the degree that the department heads have to get three quotes and all this kind of stuff. They, they would be outside of that, but they would just need to, to submit a request outlining what it is they want to do, but, what they want the money for, but also it's information about the organization and that kind of stuff that comes in as part of that application. So that would be the process and that, that's due by the end of February, close to the end of February, the request. And then it goes into the budget. You see it in April when you start, they would come to that, a session like all the other entities of, to, to ask for and decide which ones you've included and that kind of thing. Which, if they do it that way, would give them some more time to get the polit, the other thing ducks in a row, so to speak, for their organization that if they were considered for funding, they might be in a better position to actually get quotes, do, do things because they've got things in place for the organization that, that sounds like a in process.
Falling into, yeah, budget, but things are falling into place, yep, okay.
So they, will they, how do they get the application?
They say, can I have an application? Cassie Allison, who sits at the front counter, manages all of those, they're, she sends them all out, she gets them all back. They have not gone out yet. Um, I will ask her to enter the historical society on the distribution, which says, here's the application, here's the rules, this is where we have to have it in, and this is where the meeting is. Does that sound?
That works for me. Just that's, I guess that's, that's in your hands, but.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the process, so, and you can-
It's not complicated. But the council came up with a process, I don't know how many years ago now, for outside agency requests that has a policy that discusses what the goals are through that and then ask for information on the organization, um, what role it plays in the life, so to speak, of Bucksport. of Bucksport.
Just seems like that would be a, a good, healthy Band-Aid on a six-year discussion to get us much further down the road.
Yep, yep.
If we, if we have the money to fund it.
Yep.
That, yeah, we gotta have the money to have the conversation.
Yep, agreed. Anything else from the council? Upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment and schedule of committee meetings. The goals and objectives meeting date, for those of you new to the council, or back to the council, you'll remember Councilor Abs, that that meeting, at least in my time on the council, has been a separate meeting on a night, we have done it, on a night that is not a typical council meeting. I believe we've also done it on a night that is a council meeting. I don't know what the pleasure of the council is, but it would be great to have that meeting either the first full week of February, so like an evening on, say, the 4th, 5th, or 6th, I'm just throwing the dates out there, or if we needed to go into the next week, not to do it on a council night, because our next meeting will be February the 13th, well, excuse me, our first meeting in February will be the 13th. So if we did it, perhaps the preceding evening or on February the 11th. I don't know what the pleasure of the council is and what works for everybody's schedule, but I kind of would like to set that tonight so we can begin having these conversations that we've been talking about.
Is February 6th an option?
Yeah, the Thursday before our normal meeting, that'd be an option.
We've tried to drive most, historically, we've tried to drive things to Thursday night. Is that a bad?
So, yeah, I have a standing meaning that I moved from the council night to be the first Thursday to, because it needs to go up against another committee, so that's my only problem. It's the first Thursday.
Could we do the 5th?
Wednesday, the 5th?
Would Wednesday the 5th? The only reason that making it earlier is that this informs the budget process in terms of...
I can do the 5th?
The 5th work for...
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Great, thank you. And just as a heads up, and we'll talk more about this as we get closer, but we'll look at doing town manager evaluations in March. So we'll talk about that.
I missed one.
Yeah. And you're gonna send out committee info?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because the skate park wants to talk about, they've gotten grants, they, they wanted to hire a designer, et cetera, but where is it gonna really be in the long term? Is, is, you can't design a park unless you know where it's gonna be, and that, it's a more involved discussion than it sounds like because it's, there's a lot of other moving pieces. So they had asked when they, we should have, the committee will be established, we can have it on the 23rd at 6 o'clock, if that...
If that's, yeah, if we can, if we can do that, yep. We can, I can, we can put anybody new on that committee, we can take care of that first and then speak with them. Yep.
Yeah, well, if everybody, I will send out the committees and who's on it, and if everybody just writes on what they want or emails it to you, then you would have what everybody's preferences were.
Yep.
The outside committees, which are Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities and Cemeteries, also, I don't know if the existing people want to stay on that or if they want to move off that to something else. Councilor Eastman, did you want to stay?
I can if no one wants it. If someone wants it, you can.
I'm happy to stay on Bucksport Bay. We've got a pretty good back and forth.
Okay, well, we can...
If that's the pleasure of the rest of the council.
No, Councilor Eastman's done a ton of heavy lifting on cemeteries this past year. Spent a lot of...
Agreed.
Spent a lot.
Yep, I think the cemetery is one, is a great one. Politician in my nature, but for, but for a new counselor as well. But if anybody has an interest, please let me know.
And it does, so everybody knows, it meets on the second meeting, the Thursday at 4:30.
Yep, the second Thursday of the month at 4:30, yep.
The last meeting, I said that wrong, the last Thursday.
Got it, yep.
Prior to the council.
Right, yep. So we will do an infrastructure committee meeting on the 23rd at, you want to do that, 6 or 6:30?
6 probably, because you never, that could be a long discussion.
It could be a long...
6 PM, got it. Thank you. And just a heads up, I know we have, at our next meeting, Jen, are you?
That's the one I can't be.
Right, okay, is it everyone else, as far as they know now, here next meeting? Great, great.
That is the 23rd, correct?
That is.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on any of that?
I just have one up since in February, Mr. Mayor, which I wrote to you.
Yes, yep, and I'll talk to that closer to that date. Mr. Johnson, please.
Is it my understanding that?
I'm gonna get yelled at by the folks at home if you don't come up to that.
No, they can hear from anywhere.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, old habits die hard. You can, you can speak from right there because...
Is it my understanding that Councilor Eastman's gonna stay on the cemetery? Is that correct?
Unless somebody, you know, eagerly comes forward.
If we don't have a meeting scheduled because we were waiting for this event to take place, right?
Correct.
Then we can schedule that. My other question is, Conservation Committee has no board or no representative on it right now, and we've been meeting on that, so I don't know if it's required with that specific thing, but I believe it is. It's never come out as a, as a need that I could see in the chart or anything, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
What day do you meet? What day is that meeting, Chris?
Conservation Committee? Man, I'm on so many committees right now.
That is on the next agenda for discussion about the tree inventory and all that that was discussed, but that came to me after this agenda was done, so it's on the agenda for the 23rd to talk about the conservation's request that's supposed to be submitted for a tree inventory.
The question is, is there a need or is the code, the chart, to require a council person beyond that committee's?
I will check. I don't know off the top of my head, but I will check.
Yeah, and if there is anybody on the council interested, just let me know. Anything else? If not, Chair, we need to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Holes in favor? opposed. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. Thanks.